Okay. All right, then. I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, September 7th, 2022. Sherri, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Quelisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Starkweather.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Bennett, would you lead us?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Public Communications, a time set aside for people to discuss items of city business that are not on the scheduled agenda for the Planning Commission tonight. Do we have anyone here present who wishes to speak on other than an agenda item? Okay, Sherri, do we have anyone in the waiting room?
No one raising their hand.
No one raising a hand, okay. Then we will move on to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for August 7th. I'm sorry, 17th. Any commissioners have any refinements to those minutes?
I move we adopt the minutes as received.
Okay.
I do see a problem on page three of four, item four, sub-bullet two. It says fire suppression mitigation related to safety element and, and it's blank.
Oh, and, it's and item three.
Ah. No, thank you.
I lose my way at the end of a sentence sometimes, too. Any other, anything else? I, I did not find anything. Oh, by the way, I, I did get an email from Mayor Styx saying she would not be here tonight. I presume she's at the candidate forum over at Matilla High Junior High.
That got canceled.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Several of the candidates. Several of the candidates had COVID.
Are you kidding me?
Why would I kid you? Have I known to kid anybody? Twenty-eighth, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, all right, then we'll all get to here. All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of August 17th. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sherri, call the roll, please, on item one.
Quelisi.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Starkweather.
Yes.
Very good. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have two sites in, in tonight's agenda, 1104 North Signal and 205 North Signal.
Judy and I visited the site of the, where it is.
Up the hill?
Up the hill, yes, and met with the contractor, I guess that's who it was.
Okay, it's 1104 North Signal.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. No other ex parte contacts?
No.
Okay.
And you and I went up there.
We did the same.
Also with a person who didn't identify what her role was, but I'm guessing it was contractor.
Yeah. She did mention that to me just as you were pulling up, yeah.
Yeah, I did as well. I, I had met with the contractor up there.
Okay. Anyone had any ex parte contacts regarding 205 North Signal? No. I, I haven't either, either, in either case, but I do note that one of the applicants, or maybe a co-applicant, on 205 North Signal also is part of the waitstaff at Bonnie Lou's, so I do see her there.
We talk about. Duly noted, thank you.
Duly noted.
All right, good service, good food, good service, nice people.
Yeah.
Okay, item number two, public hearing item, DRP and a variance at 1104 North Signal.
I'm curious, I am curious if the applicant is here for, oh, thank you.
Okay, we'll hear from the applicant after we hear from staff and ask questions.
Thanks, just, I wasn't sure if anyone was here. So this project is located at 1104 North Signal, and on February, or sorry, June, June 7th, the applicant submitted an application requesting approval of a design review permit and a variance to allow installation of a fence that exceeds the maximum allowable height of four feet within the front yard area. Were you gonna go ahead of me?
You can go.
Okay, okay.
We've already started.
Okay. The request is for an increase to, in the allowable height, to five feet for, in order to provide the required enclosure for a proposed swimming pool. The location of the pool, which is on the north side of the property and projecting into the front yard area, is due to the extreme topography at the rear of the site, which all of you saw on your site visit, I'm assuming. The front yard area is the area between the front property line and the front-facing wall of the main structure. The project site measures approximately 290 feet in length, and the residence is located approximately 116 feet back from the front property line, and the pool is proposed to be located, starting at about 71 feet back from the front property line and extending back beyond the front line of the residence. Ideally, the pool would be located within the buildable, within a buildable rear yard area where the required five-foot fence wouldn't be an issue because you would be allowed a six-foot fence back there. However, within a short distance past the rear of the house, the grade drops dramatically, making the prospect of building a pool and required fence back there extremely difficult. Upon walking the site, staff found that, other than the north side of the property and increasing into the front yard area, there's really no other reasonable place to build a swimming pool on the property. The fact that the pool location will be 71 feet back from the front property line, and the front property line has a fence, and there's existing landscaping that's relatively dense, this would make it so the fence would unlikely be visible from the street. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the request for the design review permit and variance for the increase in the maximum height from four feet to five feet, not really because of the lack of visibility because of it, because that's really one of the findings that you need to make, but because to build a pool in the rear yard where the fence would be allowed is really, it's not reasonably feasible due to the topography, which makes this a special situation, or compromised situation. And with that, staff is recommending approval of this project, and if you have any questions of me, and then, as you know now, we have someone from the applicant here.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Can I, I want to also just kind of dovetail onto that as well, and this commission, this body doesn't necessarily see a lot of variances come forward, and for obvious reasons, they're pretty unique. We're looking for specific circumstances that are unique to the property or topography that, that happens to be just outside of the boundaries of what we typically see. I wanted to walk through some of these findings, if I could, just for a moment, just to unpack some of this stuff. It's a lot to read, a lot to review. Variances, just by, by government code, are identified through state law, and then that then trickles down to, to local regulations, and we have our own kind of curtailed, specific findings. And it's basically, what, six different findings that we've got that we address here? All of those have to be made in the positive in order to move forward with a recommendation for approval. Staff's always looking at each project, and I would say on a daily basis, the first question when we say there's specific development standards, they ask, well, what's the chances of a variance? And we're talking about that on a daily basis. On a very rare occasion, like tonight, this commission is reviewing and considering a variance, a variance for the height of a fence, not for the location of the pool. Remember, it's, it's the height of the fence, the fence within the front yard area. City Council, at the end of 2020, I believe, approved revisions to the code that allowed for the fence height to be raised from three feet to four feet. Now with that.
In the front setback.
Within the front setback area, yeah. The, anything outside of the front yard area, front back, front set, front setback area is six feet.
How far is the front setback area from the road?
Uh, th- this one happens to be 40 feet, I recall.
Um, this one is about 71 feet, I think.
Yeah.
No, I meant the, the rule, what's the rule?
The rule for this one's 40.
Oh, for this particular?
Yeah, but in terms of front yard area, it's further, because now it's taken from the front of the building, or the primary residence.
It's, it's from the edge of the property line by the street to the front-facing wall.
So even if there was a couple hundred yards, that would still be considered?
Front yard area, yes.
It's front yard.
Seems a little strange to me.
It is the way in which this code has been crafted, and it's crafted, been crafted very intentionally, I would say, to that degree, because I know council, staff had that conversation ad nauseam as to, as to how that would be addressed. So, anyway, I wanted to get into, to some of these findings, just so that this commission knows and understands that what we're looking at here is, for instance, of the, of the six, I know Mara talked to, like, special circumstances, and that's really relating to topography, location, shape, size, surroundings. I think that, those are all the things that we're considering when we're looking at it. Unique property features is really what it boils down to. Preservation enjoyment of property rights possessed by other properties, what does that mean? In legal terms, that's really the way it's written. Layman terms, specific to this, it's whether or not there are swimming pools and spas within, like zoning, and we certainly have a number of those, so we're looking at consistency. And then, and whether or not it's detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. In this case, it's a, it's a swimming pool. It's a fence that we're looking to raise from four to five feet. Hazardous to human health is really what we're boiling it down to, not seeing it here. And does it constitute a special privilege? In this case, given the circumstances to the significant slope to the rear, which is typically, or even the side areas, which is typically where you would see a pool, you're not really awarding any sort of a uniqueness to it, because if you were to do any sort of grade, to raise the grade in the back, that, that to me is more significant than just simply having a pool in the front yard, which in this case, you have to drive down into this area to get to, it's not something where it sits on a plateau. So the visibility is going to be.
The fence and the house are all well below the grade of the road already.
Well below grade from the, from the road, exactly. And then, does not allow or use or activity not expressly authorized, it's not creating an immediate use conflict. A pool is a permitted use. The fence is what we're taking a look at, and that's the uniqueness of what we're talking about tonight. And then general plan consistency, that's across the board. We see consistency here in terms of how it operates. There's certainly several policies that we have in place, I know Mara has a couple of those that are plugged into the draft resolution. So with that, I just wanted to, to kind of unpack how we, how we look at variances. It's not just a, hey, it kind of makes sense. No, we look at this at a very pragmatic standpoint, using the planning tools that government code has given us and passed down, specific to the Ojai Municipal Code, so. Anyway, I just wanted to, I know before, I think the last meeting, you, I think this commission was, was a little bit curious as to how variances are typically reviewed, wanted to unpack that for this commission, so. If you have any questions?
You had a briefing chart, I thought, was that?
Say that again, a briefing chart?
I thought, when I walked in before the meeting, I saw what looked like a briefing chart on the screen.
Yeah, I have it right here, actually.
Okay, that's just.
I'm not pulling it up.
Just talking points, okay.
They're talking points. Uh, I have an aerial, if we want to talk through where it's going to be located at, if that comes up. Yeah, it should be in the packet.
Yeah. Yep. By the way, I don't know, anyone else have questions for staff?
No.
I wanted to compliment you on the great detail of listing the required findings and responses to each of them, specific to this case, that made for easy reading. Okay, no questions for staff, let's hear from the applicant then. Good evening, sir, your name?
Good evening. My name's Richard Lusakla, I am the contractor for the project.
Okay.
Appreciate the thoroughness of what you went through on that. Just bit of history, this is my 49th year of building swimming pools. Have dealt with fence and safety ordinances throughout my career. One of the arguments that, that I thought was very apparent immediately was, to your point about where a pool could be located on that lot, on that property, and it's really in the only spot that it can go, is where it's indicated on that plan. The fact that there is a substantial wall along that front property line already, that is at least five feet tall, and the double gates that are out there on the road, so I thought, having a five-foot-high fence that's approximately five and a half feet below the entrance level, as you come into that driveway apron, that location is a good five feet below that access level, so you have kind of redundant fencing going in there. You've got that solid wall on the street versus an open, what will be a wrought iron fence down below. If that were elevated, I could understand it being a visual issue for people just happening to be on the street or a neighbor, being able to see that fencing around that pool, but it's down below. And so, I think we, of course, we've got the, the safety issues that we have to comply with around a pool, and so, the four-foot limitation on a front yard fence conflicted with those safety limitations. So, in the interest of being able to give these people what they want, I was hoping to find some way to, to get a variance on that code to allow us to build a, a five-foot fence around that pool. I think that's really all I have to say.
Okay, anyone have any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, it would be the time, the appropriate time for public comment, is there anyone here present other than the applicant who wishes to speak on 1104 North Signal? Sherri, is there anyone in the waiting room with a raised hand?
No raised hand.
Okay. I guess then we'll open and close the public hearing portion of this, and go to deliberations. Your thoughts, sir?
Uh, well, visually, when we closed, had the gate closed, you, there's no way you could even see it from the road.
See the house.
Uh, I didn't notice that, but I was looking to see whether you could see a four-foot fence, and you couldn't, so it just seemed like an appropriate variance to me, just from being there.
I agree.
Okay, sir?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too, the contractor stated it well, I think there's, it's just extra fencing, yeah.
Uh, the lady who did give us the tours, I presume she works for you, sir? Did a fine job, and.
I'll let her know then.
I, I agree, it, it seems like a very straightforward and natural thing to grant a variance here. So, if we have a motion.
I'll move that we grant the variance as specified in the, is there an ordinance for this, or a motion?
DRP and a variance.
Yeah, the resolution and the variance. As written.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Starkweather and.
Second.
Second by Ms. Murphy. Any discussion? Sherri, would you call roll then on item number two?
Quelisi.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Starkweather.
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Fine, we'll be thrilled.
Good. I guess there was one thing I should have probably asked before we closed this whole thing out. I understand the variance, I don't understand the DRP, is that because the pool's in the front yard?
Sorry. When you, uh, when a variance is required, you're required also a design review permit, or I should say, a design review permit is required when you're, when you're going for a variance or a conditional use permit.
So does the applicant pay two separate fees, one for a variance and one for a DRP?
Yes, they do, two applications, two fees, one set of plans.
Okay. Onto then item three, a request regarding for modifying an existing CUP at 205 North Signal.
Thank you. I would like to start off by just a little bit of history, so in 2014, the Planning Commission at the time approved a conditional use permit to allow for outdoor dining, serving beer and wine, and non-amplified entertainment within the restaurant, restaurant, and on the existing outdoor patio for what's now Love Social Cafe. The CUP included, or actually still includes, because it runs with the land, includes a, that a temporary use permit be required for all events that occur outside of the building envelope and patio area, and the indoor seating was approved for approximately 16 patrons and the patio seating for approximately 36 patrons. The current request, as you stated, is a request to modify that conditional use permit and to permit amplified entertainment on the patio for unlimited evening events for approximately 30 to 40 patrons, and although not permitted within the current CUP, the applicant, what, actually, we have already heard this at a previous Planning Commission meeting, but they've had amplified entertainment on the patio there a couple of times, or there've been a couple of complaints, and I'm not sure how many times that they've actually had it, I believe it was during, started during COVID dining restrictions. Uh, the project site is located in the village mixed-use zone, which is perceived and understood throughout the community to serve as transitional zoning from commercial districts to single-family residential districts. There are two single-family residential sites abutting the project site. Uh, one is located directly to the north, and the second is located to the west. The city has a noise ordinance that would, well, it's always included because it's, it's noise ordinance, that's always there, however, it would be spelled out in the conditions of approval if the commission were to approve the, this request. However, again, it's always enforced because it's the noise ordinance, but I want to say that the purpose of the ordinance is meant to maintain a quiet and comfortable living environment and to protect residents from unreasonable disturbing sound. The volume of sound is to be controlled so that it won't be unreasonably loud, jarring, or disturbing, or a nuisance to people or domestic animals. Staff is concerned that the amplification of sound at the outdoor patio will have this type of impact on the surrounding residential community. The staff report includes that the VMU zoning district is meant to be a transitional zone between residential and commercial uses, however, what's also included in, is that amplified entertainment is not a permitted use, but rather a subject that's to be reviewed and considered by, and through a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission. The reason for this is that not all sites in the VMU zone are appropriate for the use. If the site were surrounded on all sides by commercial structures, there would be a buffer for residential uses, for, for example, that would be for, perhaps for another commercial use that's surrounded by commercial uses in the VMU zone. The city has a somewhat similar situation with another site, although it's in a C1 zone adjacent to a VMU, where amplified entertainment simply isn't permitted. In fact, that the only site that does permit amplified entertainment is at 615 West Ojai Avenue, and the resolution for that location, for that site is, is pretty heavily conditioned. Staff is asking that the commission consider that the presence of the adjacent residential uses make this a sensitive transitional neighborhood, where although commercial and residential uses may blend well, amplified entertainment may not be appropriate. Amplification was considered and decided not to be included in the Planning Commission resolution in 2014, and the neighborhood conditions have not changed since then. The current CUP permits unlimited, unlimited amplified entertainment seven days a week until 10:00 PM in the restaurant and on the small patio, which is approximately 1,000 square feet, that's, I did not go out there and measure it, I measured it myself.
I just want to make sure I heard you right, the current CUP allows amplified.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say that, non-amplified?
Non-amplified.
Yeah, sorry, if I, I either misspoke or mispronounced, pronounced.
I misheard, I don't know.
Yeah, so, um, unamplified music seven days a week till 10, till 10:00 PM, on the patio and inside the building. And again, the patio is approximately 1,000 square feet, so, it's pretty small. So with that, we do have the applicant here, but I also think that the director had something to add.
I have like three points that I want to say.
Nice.
Good.
Well done.
Gets an A.
All right, any questions for staff on this?
Uh, I, I have one quick question, I don't know if this is for the applicant or if this is for staff, but, uh, do we know how many feet it is from the, the small patio to the nearest residential house?
You're talking distance to the north or to the?
Distance to the north, or to the northwest, basically, yeah.
I should know that number.
Not to scale.
I, I do not.
Nothing they have is to scale.
Yeah, exactly, the plan isn't to scale, and I, I don't have that number, unfortunately. Wait, what's this right here?
Though it's the, um, the property to the north and west, if you, if you can see that, is actually closer, because the property to the north not only has the parking lot, but there's another parking lot, so.
Yeah, I think that's the closest residential facility.
Commissioner Trent, I'll get the answer, answer for you here in, in a second.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Yes, sir, please go ahead.
I got a couple. Oh, whoa.
Broken.
It's broken. I break everything. Tell me which commercial facilities in Ojai have amplified music or allowed to?
There is a conditional use permit at 615, which is.
Rancho Inn.
Rancho Inn, thank you.
Rancho Inn, so that's not really in downtown?
No.
Okay. Any in downtown?
No.
I thought there was one on Matilla Ha Street, the health food place or something had, okay, what about Thistle and Ramble or whatever, don't they have amplified music? Ramble and Tipple, whatever it's called.
Tipple and Ramble does not have amplified music.
That's the one I was saying, that was in the C1 next to the VMU, it's specifically not amplified, or non-amplified.
And on, going to page three of six.
Three, three of six in.
This is the municipal code of, of our report, sorry, of our report. So, it says amplified sound shall be limited to either music or human speech. Music includes radios, stereos, disc players and, and equipment, or actual music that are being played.
That too.
Both, concludes them all?
I'm sorry, you're, you're, so number one there is the type of amplified music.
Well, it says amplified shall be limited to.
Music or human speech.
Down on four below, it says it's unlawful for any person to operate a radio, stereo, compact disc, or other sound amplifier equipment.
On the public right-of-way.
On the public right-of-way.
Or a public land.
Or public land in a manner that exceeds this noise, okay.
Right, so this section here is, is just including all of section five dash 11.051, because, correct, that, that is, number four is for the public right-of-way or public land as opposed to.
So even if, if you're on this, on a restaurant on the street, that's not considered public right-of-way?
Four doesn't apply if you're talking about amplified anything on private property.
Okay.
Right, and even though that's outside, that is not public property, that's private.
So my other question is, this noise ordinance, uh, with the decibel amounts down below, and then above on section three, which says, "Volume of sound shall be controlled that will not, unreasonably loud, raucous, jarring, disturbing, or a nuisance to persons or domestic animals within the area of audibility," is that a complaint-driven ordinance?
No, it's just the, the city council created this ordinance, I don't, I, you know what, I can't answer the question.
Well, I'm going to rephrase it, enforcement-wise, is this complaint-driven, or you guys walk around and, and?
I can answer that one.
Well.
It, it is complaint-driven, however, would say also. It is complaint-driven, however, would say also we have co-compliance actively monitoring businesses, residential areas throughout the city. So, is it complaint-driven? Absolutely. Will code catch stuff and then address it on a case-by-case basis? Yes.
Okay.
It's kind of a high rate of both.
And the section three there seems quite subjective, particularly from the person who is, would be considering it a nuisance. So what might be raucous, jarring, disturbing to my 16-year-old granddaughter may not, or not be, it would be to me possibly. So how do you enforce that thing?
Well, then, we would be looking then at the actual noise level through a device.
So that whole section three is meaningless then? So you're not going to actually enforce that as it's stated?
It's subjective language, and the noise ordinance itself is objective language. It's in the tables right below.
Well, this is part of the noise ordinance, but anyway.
Yeah, and when you're looking at the noise ordinance, it's the collective piece of the ordinance. So bits and pieces are what we look to. For instance, the 5-11.04 noise standards limitations, that's what we turn to when we're looking at the specific standards as they apply in terms of the DBA. And that is measured in a hourly rate, 15-minute, 5-minute, 1-minute. The noise levels themselves lend themselves to the specific zones. And the specific zones are residential, commercial, industrial. Included within the residential is the VMU. So there's a more, there's a stricter litmus test to VMU than what we would have for industrial or even commercial. So for instance, the example where Mara was identifying 615 West Ojai Avenue, that is Ojai Rancho Inn. This commission certainly went into the detail of that project in ensuring that any of the noise components that were associated with any sort of amplified entertainment were addressed appropriately given the sensitive uses. Now, those sensitive uses, which are residential, are actually buffered by existing, for instance, the trail to the south, I want to say.
Buildings to the east and west.
And then you've got commercial to the east and west. But there is actually residential use within the commercial, which is non-conforming. So there's some uniquenesses to that. That wasn't necessarily something that we focused on when this commission talked about it, when that came forward almost a year ago now that I'm thinking about it.
And there were regular residential uses to the northeast and the southeast of that property. And so the commission said, "Well, you have a noise ordinance. We've got to measure the sound levels at the edge of the property and make sure that you don't exceed them."
So is the edge of the property the standard?
Yes.
It's typically the standard. However, when someone, when there is a complaint that comes in, the way in which this ordinance reads, it is actually taken from the edge of the complainant's property line. In the case of Ojai Rancho Inn, we took that a step further, and we said, anytime that we're doing noise readings, those are taken from the edge of that specific property, meaning Ojai Rancho Inn, 615 West Ojai Avenue. The code, actually, it was a stricter standard. I mean, we talked, it was several months ago, obviously, but that was something that we certainly had a fairly in-depth conversation in regards to.
So are the noise levels only taken from the nearby residences or anywhere else surrounding the property?
The way the code reads is it's taken from the complainant.
So I could be walking down the street, and I could complain about the noise?
And we can identify where that complaint is coming from, then we take it from the edge of that property. We usually ask to be invited onto the property and then take it from the edge. The other area is, hold on, we can also take it from the edge of the specific property, which would be basically from the street.
Yeah.
That's, that's what you just said. First, you said code compliance measures the sound level where the complaint was made, and then separately, or possibly at the edge of the property, causing the complaint?
Yes. So it's two. If we are aware, sometimes they come in anonymously, and we're not able to go to the source. So then we default to the edge of the property.
Okay. Okay.
And one final question. This is a CUP. So we can put whatever reasonable conditions in terms of time or that, decibels, that sort of thing? If we make findings that that were necessary for our approval?
If the commission chooses to approve this project, they can approve it with conditions, yes. And that's when I was also saying that the Rancho Inn was heavily conditioned.
I see.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, as I did with the Rancho Inn process, I've got a problem here because we've got conditions upon conditions upon conditions, and they're all different measures. It's, some of it is in Celsius and some of it is in Fahrenheit. You know, there's this language, which is is one's person's judgment in one area, then there's a table with numbers on it, and then there's a 35-feet reference in the middle of number four on page three of four, three of six. And it's like all over the map. And it seems to me we have a specific, we should have, and I believe do have, a specific formula in the city. And why we jump from that formula to things that piss people off is what we come down to. And this one says, "Or their dog," you know, which is like, I'm sorry, I have a neighbor who, when I drive down the street, starts barking, and I'm like three blocks from the house. And, you know, it's just the way that dog is. And I think trying to appease a dog and trying to appease feelings about what's appropriate, if we've got a mathematical model and we have a measurement device, and we need instructions as to how the device is to be applied, and if those instructions currently are not adequate, I'm sure this is an issue which is dealt with all the time, isn't it? I mean, I would think you'd go to the industry standards on this, and you'd find that there have been studies and write-ups, and cities all over the United States and the world have grappled with this question and have come up with various specific formulas as opposed to sort of making it up as we go along kind of thing.
I wouldn't say that the city is making it up as we go along. We apply these standards to each and every case that comes forward. If it's co-compliance, then that's the route that we work through. If it's planning, then that's the route we work through. If it starts with building, then that's the route we work through. Typically, it ends up running through co-compliance. If we can't gain compliance, then we enforce compliance.
Well, I learned something new tonight, and that is they measure DBAs, audio decibels, at the point of complaint if that can be determined, and at the edge of the property causing the complaint if it can't.
Yeah, what we find most often is...
And I don't see that in the code anywhere. I'm curious why it isn't.
Well, hold on. If I have the code in front of me here, which I don't think I do.
We only have that part of it.
The tables that are on page three of the admin report are extracted from 5-11.04. The text above it is from 5-11.05.
Yeah, so if you go to section 5-11.08, "Sound Level Measurement," about three sentences in, "Outdoor Measurements Shall Be Taken With A Microphone Located Along The Property Line Of The Complainant's Property Or The Noise Source."
Ah, thank you. I read part of it. I didn't read that part. I thank you for the clarification.
I have a question. I'm not familiar with the equipment with which these sounds are measured. But looking at your table, it sounds like it can be louder for 15 minutes, or maybe you have some drums roll for five minutes. The person, who the complainer is listening to this and gets through the drum thing, and then calls the code enforcer officer. And by that time, the drums are down. Done.
Or the one minute of feedback, microphone feedback with a screech.
With a screech. How is a code officer supposed to, unless you've got a tape recording of the whole thing? How are you going to really judge that?
So, this has actually come up recently. We've had this situation come up on recent events. Now, the nice thing is with the specific events that I'm about to, I'm not going to mention the specific events, but events that have happened along Ojai Avenue, we've been made aware of those events. So we do typically a pre-measurement, and then while the event's going on, we'll do it sporadically throughout the event. So we'll typically have co-compliance monitoring it throughout a specific event. Now...
Working evening and even late night hours, you mean?
Adjust their schedule, yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. To ensure that we're meeting that threshold that's within this code. It's not, I would say, a few years ago, that was not the case. But I think we've done a complete pivot in terms of addressing it head-on and trying to get ahead of the storm, essentially.
Okay. More questions?
Yeah, a couple. So, we have outlined the Village Mixed Use and its purpose, and one of the purposes here is transitional zoning from commercial districts to single-family residential districts, where we probably have quieter standards in residential areas, which I'm questioning because I don't know if we do. So, do these amplifying equipment, if I'm in a residential neighborhood, can I have amplified equipment as long as I meet these requirements?
If you're at your residence, so there's standard noise level maximum, and so if, but we don't regulate if a single-family house is having a party in their backyard. However, if they exceed the noise ordinance and there's a complaint, then it'll be addressed by a code compliance officer.
Okay. And these are the same noise ordinance?
Same standards in the case.
Yeah, same standards per zone. So if you're in the VMU, it's 55 or 45, depending on the hour of the day. And the commercial is 65 and 55, depending on the normal. So yes, if you're a single-family house, well, I don't have the R1 zone here, the numbers for R1 zone.
Here's the other thing I think is important. It's not just co-compliance. Let's say, for instance, it's 11 o'clock at night, and someone's enjoying a birthday party that goes well beyond the hours of what you typically see. We've all been there, right? PD also has the ability to enforce these rules as well. So it's not just co-compliance. I'm not going to call co-compliance at 11:00 p.m.
I'm sorry, you said who has...
PD.
Police Department. Oh, okay.
Sheriff's Department.
The very last sentence of this, of Chapter 11, the Noise Standards and Regulations, states, "For purposes of this chapter, enforcement officer and enforcement official," meaning the director of the community development, the chief of police, the code enforcement officer, and their designees or deputies. So it really, it filters down. So if there's a deputy on-site, they could address the situation as well.
They're on patrol all the time, so.
And do they have the monitoring equipment?
They do. Yep. The reality is, is they will typically, I don't want to speak for PD, but they'll typically go in and say, "Turn it down. It's late." I don't want to come back and issue whatever they end up issuing. So it's usually a warning first time.
Right. So I guess, again, just trying to get clarity. So if I'm at my house and I have amplified music outside, as long as I'm meeting these conditions, I should be okay. I should be fine. Right?
Yes.
So really, the difference between the zoning doesn't have much stake, right?
It does.
Okay.
And this is why. I think it's an important piece. We're looking at two different prongs. One is the noise, which I think everybody here on this commission is grappling with in terms of understanding how we...
Decibels are decibels, yes.
Yeah, the numbers are the numbers. The volume is the volume, noise is noise, right? The second piece is the land use aspect. So in our code, within the VMU, C1, M1, all of those kind of commercial-industrial uses have a criteria that if it's outdoors, it requires a conditional use permit. Anything that's not indoors, so it's the whole premise for why Ojai Rancho Inn had to go through the conditional use permit.
Right.
They were doing outdoor events.
The tables say residential zone, including VMU. That, as I read it...
Yeah, so you...
Any residentially-zoned property, including VMU-zoned property?
Correct. That's the one prong. That's from a sound standpoint, from a noise standpoint, measuring. Then we also apply the land use aspect. Two different prongs. The land use aspect speaks to CUP as it relates to any sort of outdoor use. So if it's not within an enclosed building...
So if he has a party in his backyard, he has to get a CUP?
No, that's just...
No, no, no. He's not in the right zone.
Remember, I was mentioning it's the commercial-industrial use.
Commercial zone.
Yes.
Residential zone.
If the VMU is in the residential land use arena...
It's not within the, for measuring noise, we're applying the stricter standard. In terms of land use, it falls within the commercial-industrial zone. Remember, two prongs.
No, I know, but didn't we move that recently?
We've talked about it, yes. That was one of the items that I identified as potentially a concern that we've got to make sure we address.
Okay. I got you.
But has not been moved yet. Discussed, yes, not moved.
Okay. Got you. Go ahead.
You keep using the word noise. One person's sound is noise, and another person's sound is music. And so I really think we have a very difficult issue here. And I know it's been, I frankly feel that, you know, we're loose with the language. I think that the word, that in here, we talk about the volume shall be controlled so will not be unreasonably loud. Well, what's unreasonable, you know? On my...
The code is squishy.
On my 80th birthday, and at midnight or 11 o'clock, I'm celebrating. I don't think that's unreasonable. You know, there's just a lot of, whereas the numbers are the numbers, you know? And so why we can't stick with the numbers and even get out of this whole question about amplification? We're in this thing because we're trying to throw words at it that somehow make it better. Or, you know, there's no difference between a trumpet played at 70 dB and a speaker of a trumpet played amplified to 70 dB, you know? And that's what's bothering me, is that it's, that it doesn't really matter which it is. If it's 70 dB, it's 70 dB. And it's, and, you know, and if it's got a pattern or a length, it is more or less irritating. And why we have to pull out the word amplification, I just, I don't understand. It's adding unnecessary words to the...
Well, I hope, I'm not, if I don't respond completely, then I would like you to take over, but...
Not deliberate the issue for this...
Right.
So when we use the word "sound," we're talking about volume. Isn't that what this measures? D, P, dB? Volume?
It's measuring volume. So something that I, as I was listening to Commissioner Bennett, I just wanted to make a point, and that is, the reason for a conditional use permit isn't just because of the level of sound. It's also because we're looking at outdoor entertainment. And in this case, it's not specified. It's unlimited, okay? Where the, where the existing CUP is allowing non-amplified up until 10:00 p.m. And again, but it's also unlimited. It's, but then if we look at Rancho Inn, it is amplified, but that's not the only reason for the conditional use permit. It's also not the only reason for the limit of numbers, perhaps of the hours, the days of the week. It's activity going on, either on an unlimited basis or a limited basis. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So anyway, you kind of articulated exactly what my second question was. So, like, for example, with the Rancho, with Rancho Inn, we had, it was event-driven. It was based on events that they wanted to have. So everything was around the event. The conditional use permit was around these events that they wanted to have.
And amplification was allowed at certain events?
Certain events, not allowed at other events, exactly. So this particular case, they're not really saying it's related to an event. It's just all the time, whenever they want.
Right.
So as long as it's, you know, before 10 o'clock, right? But, so I'm just curious, is it something where we can identify events to make it event-driven versus just a broad brush?
So, the, the existing conditional use permit states that non-amplified entertainment at any time and to go beyond that, that barrier or whatever parameters would require a temporary use permit. And so, then you would be looking at a specific event.
Right.
Or in this case, another CUP that modifies the first one. Is that what, is that what's going on here? Because there are two, two numbered CUPs mentioned.
So, there's an existing CUP from 2014.
Right.
And if we, if you choose to modify it, we're giving it a new condition, a new number for that modification. That, that's all that, that's all that those numbers mean.
One CUP would replace the other if it changed anything?
With those specific modifications, yes.
Okay.
So, and just mentioning the Rancho Inn and this hasn't come up for this project, but it's also a recommendation, you know, of denial, but at Rancho Inn, you, there's parking. I mean, there's all, there's all kinds of things that go into a condition, looking at what's going to happen with, with events. It's not just sound.
Right.
But we have focused a lot on sound here because of the location of the two adjacent, the residential uses that are adjacent.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on the residential uses to the question that you had earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
The residential use to the west is about 110 feet.
Oh, wow.
And the residential directly to north is about 100 feet away.
Can I just clarify one question I asked before? Just, I just want to be totally sure. There is only one other outdoor commercial CUP for amplified music in the town?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the second question is, there was some mention about event-driven and they said, you said they had a temporary use permit. Does that mean they could do events now if they go and get a permit?
No, it says that they can request a temporary use permit, which is a discretionary permit and through the director that can be, conditions of approval can be placed on it. But it's something that they can request. They don't already have it.
So, that's, that's a request that could go straight to the director and you have the authority to approve it and it doesn't come before us and you can do it in a reasonable period of time?
Correct. And it's on a case-by-case, so event by event driven.
Temporary by nature.
Yeah, just, yeah, exactly. And the, to, to that point, like, for instance, I hate to hark on the Ojai Rancho Inn, but Ojai Rancho Inn, that's what they were doing before, before they went forward with the conditional use permit.
I see.
Okay, any more questions for staff? All right, well, let's hear from the applicant then. Please come forward. Give us your name and you, you are not limited to three minutes.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Sean Mason for Love Social Cafe. Hello. Thank you. I know it's your job to be here and thank you for being here and thank you for considering the minutia of what you consider inside of granting or not granting these requests. And thank you for the meeting that we had because there was, there was a great conversation and I just, I appreciate our relationship and being able to talk through things and work things out. So, I want to keep this simple and I, I, I had listened to the city council or the, the planning commission meeting when Bonnie Lou's was in question and I think it was you, Jamie, that brought this up and you're sort of making this point again, that is this really an issue of amplified sound or is it an issue of volume? And I, I understand, you know, in doing the thinking of why is amplified sound in there? Because when we first started our, which was NoSeVita back in 2015, it, there wasn't, the amplified sound, I don't know why that was put in there other than it was just legacy or it's just part of what goes in there, right? So, it was never a conversation at the time of amplified sound on our patio. So, if we, if we had, and we're allowed to do events on our patio, non-amplified. But if we had an event, which, and we just did an acoustic one last Saturday, I think, which was not very well attended, but we did an acoustic one.
Hot weather.
Yeah, it was, yes. But at least it was at night, so that was kind of nice. But if we had had somebody there at open mic night that was either performing or doing spoken word poetry or whatever, you know, people do on those, on those nights and they were talking at a level or playing music even acoustically at a level that was above 55 decibels, that would be going against the ordinance. Not necessarily our C, I mean, it wouldn't be going against our CUP, but it would be going against the ordinance. If we likewise had amplified sound that never went above 55 decibels, then we'd never be violating the ordinance, but we would be violating our CUP. So, I, I'm in agreement that it's really a volume issue. So, in terms of doing the evening events and the open mic nights being the first ones that we've been doing because there's a vacuum of that here in Ojai. They used to have it at Bohemia and then, and that's been closed for a long time. But there's been no place, I mean, there've been music venues, but no place for open mic, that kind of, like, we even had, and I think Felicia brought this up last time, we even had the seniors' writing group come and they got to read their short stories. So, it's a beautiful thing for us to be able to do for the community. And the amplified sound does make a difference, whether it's somebody speaking or to music. So, there's a difference between just acoustic and, and our patio is big enough that our stage area is over by the front door next to the building, which faces towards the street. The, I don't remember the, off the top of my head, how many feet, but if you're sitting at the, at the, that back end of our patio, which is right on the street, that's a good distance, right? So, if I'm singing and I'm acoustically singing, I know I've got to sing louder to try to reach those people. However, if I'm, have a mic and it's amplified, I don't necessarily have to sing so loud. Now, one of the things, so we've done a few open mic nights for which there's really only ever been, out of the 10 that we've done, there's only ever been one for sound for an open mic night. We, we had a second one, which was the Drag Queen Bingo, which was not a complaint about amplified sound. It probably should have been because I think it was louder than anything else we had done. We haven't done any of those since. So, up until this point, that, the, the use of amplified sound on our patio hasn't, there just haven't been complaints. That being said, we, we have a sound person that we work with to do our internet and our sound and up until now, we've only had a speaker at the stage. So, just like the singer, it's still got to project all the way to the end. So, the volume's got to be loud enough to do that. In talking to our sound guy.
That's pointing at the street you saw?
Correct, pointing toward, towards the street. That if you have a speaker on the back end over where those people are and it's coming back this way, then the volume, I, I don't know that it's quite half, but the volume could be much lower because you're not having to reach all the way over there because there's a speaker over there already coming back. So, in fact, we have a solution to the amplified sound issue that can easily keep it below 55 decibels. So, we don't have a concern about violating that ordinance with what we're doing with amplified sound on our patio. So, the, the only request that, that we have in, I mean, it's different in the CUP application, but we just want to be subject to the ordinance, like we are anyway, right? So, that if we don't go over 55 decibels, then we would like to be able to use amplified sound because it makes it a much more intimate environment to be able to do those kinds of open mic night type events. So, that's, so anyway, that's, that's all I have to say at this point.
Can you tell us where in this map your?
Yeah, you have, they're really small, but there are two squares that have Xs in them. I can walk over, you don't.
This is, this would be the stage.
Oh, the stage is in the back. Okay, okay.
This is the one coming.
Yeah, yeah, you, you saw, you see them. Yeah, the two little boxes, right.
Where's the stage?
Yeah. And the distance from the stage to the street is how much? Probably 15, 20 feet?
No, it's more like 30.
30 feet?
30, 35, something like that.
35 feet, okay.
And the distance from any part of the patio to a neighboring residential?
What's the one?
100 feet or 110?
To clarify.
Might be 110 from the street, but not from that back.
From the edge of the patio to the, to the property line to the residential to the north is about 100 feet. The edge of the patio to the nearest residential to the west is about 110 feet.
Cool. Okay, property's a lot deeper than I remember.
So, I'm surprised that somebody just 30 feet away can't be heard real clearly because I do a lot of public speaking and I often have to project at least that far or further.
Yeah.
And I. I'm talking about.
Without amplification or?
Without amplification. You're in this little intimate square there. It seems like people could hear you pretty clearly.
We're also, yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You said that you have had 10 open mic nights.
Yeah.
Have you gotten temporary permits for those?
We have not. We did not.
Two of those 10 we were made aware of.
Yes.
Co-compliance was called on those.
Yes.
When was the last one?
Last.
Uh, the last amplified one or the last?
Last amplified open mic of your 10 open mics.
It was in July, I think.
Of this year?
Yeah.
And you had something Saturday night?
This past Saturday, yeah, that was an acoustic.
That was acoustic.
There's no, there was no amplified sound, yeah.
Were you aware of the requirement for a temporary use permit?
Yes. This, so, okay, it's, um, this is the middle of COVID, so we started a little over a year ago. We're struggling as a business and we're trying to find ways to make money and to maximize the use of, of our property. And to have to, to, to spend money to do something that we didn't know was going to 100% work, I, we just couldn't afford it. So, we took a risk. And, and, and as far as I can tell, punish us for violating that, that's fine. But as far as I can tell, our experiment worked. I, I'm not condoning doing, doing it that way all the, all the time, but, I, I mean, I, yeah, so. I, I don't know what else to say about that.
Cool. Um, I, does anybody else have a question?
Okay, yeah, I got a couple. Um, so, it sounds like the primary purpose is for open mic events.
Is there, uh, do you know how many nights you want to do it per week?
Well, uh, we'd, I mean, ideally, we'd like to get it to a point where open mic nights were popular enough that we could do them once a week.
Once a week.
But we started out once a month and they then grew and we had intended to go to twice a month, which is where we stopped.
Is there a day during the week that you're looking to do these?
There were, I, we may have had a few Friday ones, but Saturday was typically the day, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, those were the only days.
And then, as far as amplification, obviously, there's multiple ways to do that. Is it just a microphone or is the instrument plugged in?
There, the instru, yes. So, there's a microphone and there's an, well, the instruments have been plugged in, yes.
Instruments have been plugged in, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and is it just acoustic or is it electric guitars as well?
I think they've only been acoustic. Yeah, I mean, this is, it's, and I can get why the amp, the no amplification because you don't, I mean, it's such a wide term, right? I mean, you know, Libby Bowl, right?
Sure.
We're not going to have bands that go to Libby Bowl to come. We're a small little patio. We're an intimate little patio. We're never going to have an electric guitar. I mean, we could, I mean, if, if it was approved, but that, that's not the vibe that we have, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, just trying to get clarity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, is there a specific time of, of day that you do these? Is it mostly at night?
They've been, they've been scheduled at 5, but they typically start around 6 to 8:30 or 9. I don't know if we've actually quite got to 9, but 8:30 or 9 had been the timeframe.
That's for the open mic nights?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and I, I noticed that the, the stage is projecting out towards the street, right, towards Signal? Do you have any sort of, or have you looked into any sort of sound barriers such as Libby Bowl where it has the bowl and it projects outward? Do you have something like that or have you thought of something like that to protect the sound from going behind up to the northwest and back behind you to the west?
We, we haven't, like, researched anything specific that would be put on the patio area to block the sound. No, we haven't.
We're, we're projected towards a certain area, like, towards the street, you know, where it's mostly commercial.
Yeah, other than the speaker going that way. Yeah, I mean, like I said, it, so we haven't really looked into that and, you know, based on our experience, there hasn't, there had, like, it hasn't been a big enough issue to, to warrant doing that. I mean, we, we could do that for sure, but.
Just curious.
Yeah, we hadn't.
And then, the last, last question, I apologize. The Saturday night acoustical night, did you have anybody complain that they couldn't be heard?
Oh, at the non-acoustical one?
Yeah, the acoustic, the acoustic night. Was there people in the audience that say, "Hey, I can't hear?"
No, but it was, yeah, but it was also half the number of people. We only, we had maybe 10 or 15, but yeah, nobody complained about not being able to hear.
They were all sitting up toward the front?
Yeah, more or less, yes. Yeah, yeah.
One person in the back who mentioned she couldn't hear. She raised her hand.
Oh, where you put it here?
No.
Okay, see? No. Ah, okay, okay. I was just curious. All right, thank you. All right, that's, that's enough of my questions.
Mr. Bennett, any other questions?
No.
Okay. But just to make it clear, you did understand the need for a temporary use permit and you chose not to request one, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I, I had sent some questions to Maura prior to the meeting and she came back with, with a good amount of detail about the requirements on Rancho Inn. Specifically, there were times when they could have amplified sound and times when they could not, events when they could and events when they could not. And no amplified music allowed for any event after 9:00 PM, which is short of the, of the noise limit time. And a number of other things. You can, you can go back and read it.
Can I ask, at that 9:00 PM, is that just for the amplified part or for any event?
No, amplified music shall be allowed for all events after 9:00 PM. Was one of the conditions.
So, the vent could continue, you just can't have amplified music?
Right. Yeah, that was, that was the condition.
Okay.
And amplified music would be allowed for monthly and annually-held events and the speakers for those events shall be pointed away from residences immediately surrounding that venue and toward Ojai Avenue in that case. So, that would be sort of like towards Signal Street and away from the residences to the north and west. I would say would be an adequate analog to the conditions that the planning commission put on the other case. Okay?
That's second speaker's pointing.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think that's intended so the people at the back who can't hear from 35 feet away.
Is that a speaker there, you know, on the right-hand side right there?
Yes, that's a speaker. So, that's pointing.
That's pointing kind of toward the building.
Well, it's situ, it, it could, it could point south as well. The point of having that speaker there is so that both speakers can be a lower volume than any one of those. So, even if it were facing to the residence, which it wouldn't be, it would still, having that second speaker would allow the volume to be lower, which is the point of.
A condition could be that it not point at the residences, so. We have a lot of discretion here, I think, in, in the midst of a subjective section of the code. Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. We may, we may ask you to come up again if other questions come up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. It's now time to open the public comment portion of this public hearing. And the first, oh, we have, I have two cards here. First, Mr. Wirick. Who is, by the way, one of the nearby residences?
Yes, I'm speaking as a, as a private citizen, obviously. I think there's been a lot of confusion here tonight. A conditional use permit are property rights. There are definitions of use of property. And when our family, uh, looked at purchasing the adjacent property, there was discussion about what the nature of the business next door would be like, and I remember saying, let's read the conditional use permit. And the conditional use permit was very specific. And the condition, the very specific condition of saying no amplification was a critical factor in our decision to purchase. Because that implied a certain type of business model. In other words, those are the rules of the road. The property owner, the, uh, the business operator knows those rules of the road when they enter into that business operation. And that defines the relationship between the properties, it's a property rights issue. I seriously doubt whether or not, uh, our family would have purchased that property if amplification had been a lot, uh, was, was the, the prohibition against amplified, amplified activity was not in that conditional use permit, it was a matter of some discussion. And I know I made the argument, I said, I think the city stands by their CUPs. That this defines a business model and a business use. And what we heard from the property, uh, operator here is they wanna change the business use away from the stipulations of the conditional use permit. They want to change those terms. And that changes the relationship between the properties. And I would argue implies a certain impact in terms of the property rights of the adjacent property because it's a change in business use from the conditional use permit that was in place that was part of the, uh, transaction analysis at the time of purchase. So I think that's really important, that it's not a matter of the noise ordinance. Uh, that's, you know, that, that overrides everything, obviously, in terms of whether it's amplified or non-amplified or so on and so forth. But the absolute prohibition on amplification is a very specific limitation on the type of business activity that clearly the operators of this business want to change. They want to change the nature of that business activity and change the relationship between the properties, which in effect is a modification of property rights. And I think that's a serious issue. I think it's a serious issue when people, um, look at conditional use permits, make property decisions on the basis of those conditional use permits. And then there's arguments about why they should change without a very clear, specific reason for those changes. So I, I just would urge that, uh, the issue here is not a noise ordinance. The issue is the nature of the property rights that were defined by this CUP. The type of business model that was implied by that CUP. And the desire of the, um, operator to change those conditions, which has an impact on the property, on adjacent properties. And I just don't think that's appropriate. Conditional use permits run with the property forever. It is part of the property right of that land, of that land use. And people ought to be able to rely on the specifics unless there is some real overriding reason to change, which I don't see in this, in this situation. You know, I was very happy to see next door to us, a, a woman who has come in and is renovating a very rundown property for residential use on the, next door to us, on the other side of us, on the corner of Aliso and Ventura. Very nice lady, uh, commutes back and forth between Irvine and Ojai, is investing all kinds of money into renovating, uh, residential use of that property. And part of the things that she talks about is the, the quiet nature of the, of the area that's also close to being able to, uh, walk into the downtown area, but still have that quiet atmosphere. So to me, the issue is fundamental that, um, when, uh, this, uh, you know, this, this, uh, city defines conditional use permits, defines the nature of property rights, defines the nature of property right relationships between properties, it's, it's a, it's kind of a big, there, there ought to be a really high bar before you change these conditions that have a certain implication for the type of business model that was to be expected by adjacent property owners when they make a property transaction decision. So I ask you to please consider that, thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? Second, Robin Gerber.
Well, feel like I'm back in law school, Bill. I'm Robin Gerber, I live on Tiaramina Lane. Overall, I just wanna say, and I know Lucas well because I tried to help with the Rancho Inn, I heard you talking about that. Um, where, of course, we changed the CUP. And, you know, there are deeds, at least where I used to live on the east coast, that say you can't have Jews and, and black people live in the house you're living in. And those are not legal anymore. A conditional use permit is far, uh, less powerful a document, I would say, than the deed that you sign to own your property. In fact, we changed CUPs. So the leap from a CUP to a property right, I don't actually think it's one you can make, Bill. I think there.
Arrest the commissioner, please.
Sorry.
Don't talk to the audience.
Right, sorry. Um, I don't think you can make that leap from looking at a conditional use permit when you have bought a property next to a commercial business and say, oh, I'm good for the rest of my life, my children's lives and my grandchildren's lives in this house because there'll never be amplified sound. That does not make sense in property law. Don't take my word for it, I'm not licensed here in California, but I don't think that that would be the case. I think all the time we change conditional use permits, but more importantly, or as importantly, I'd love to see, and when we worked on the Rancho Inn, what that was about for me is that as a town, we're supporting our businesses. And for them to do well, they need to grow and change. And in, in Kenny's case with the Rancho, it was about doing weddings outside and so growing her business. And it was, and it was a good thing, and doing events outside, which the community loved. And some of you were here when that hearing happened and she filled the room because people love it so much. Sean could have filled this room, uh, with people like me who wanted to do our comedy routines at the open mic night. But having been there last Saturday, I can tell you that at seventy years old, I can't project that far, Jeff. And you really can't hear in that space. Yeah, you got me. You, you know, you can't, you can't actually, uh, get enough projection. We had to leave and my husband's a little hard of hearing, which happens when you get older too. So they need some amplification and it sounds like you all are thinking in terms of making accommodation. And I would really urge you to make accommodation, if it's time, if it's, uh, the kind of amplification, if it's not electric guitars, but, you know, acoustic guitars, whatever that accommodation is. But let's think about how to solve these problems for our businesses and not get in their way. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here present wishes to speak on item three? Sherry, anyone in the waiting room with a hand raised?
No.
Okay.
Excuse me, Bill Miley raised his hand.
Ah, okay, come on down.
He's in Zoom.
Okay, I am unmuted, tell me that I am unmuted.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, Bill.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I agree that outdoor amplified music or voice is not appropriate in a village mixed-use zoning as support to denial. However, if for some reason the CUP is, CUP is crafted to allow to, to allow it, the following conditions should be considered. One, the challenge is the spillover of amplified sound beyond the perimeter of the Love Cafe property. The village mixed-use zoning perimeter decibels are fifty-five on average. Determined, two, determining the sound levels at all the perimeters is the proper method for managing amplified sound. West and north is residential with an average DPA of fifty-five. Village mixed use is an average DPA of fifty-five. It's very clear, it's not confusing. Fifty-five decibels is averaged and it's not ambiguous. Noise is not just noise. Amplified sources increase the mass of the sound and its movement. It increases the volume and increases the frequency. Frequencies go from bass to treble, whisper, harmonica, trumpets, violin. Three, each decibel measurement, as noted in the ordinance, is fifty-five cumulative maximum over an hour. Not one moment or not some set of minutes, one hour. Four, before committing amplified sound through a CUP, there should be a test phase. Digital DPA with memory should be used on all the property lines. The amplification equipment should also be calibrated to know the maximum amount of volume you can turn it to that will keep it under fifty-five at the perimeter. Five, complaints by nearby neighbors should, could be preempted or avoided by maintaining several recording meters on site. Continuous feedback, just like you're doing at Libby Bowl. Five, sounds whether acoustical or amplified, in a common sense term, comes in three categories, in my opinion. Repetitive sounds are even worse, like pickleball. You can like the sound, you can hear the sound, but it does not bother them. Or it's noise and bothers me or them from a lot to a little. Six, calling in a complaint about current noise, if the inspector is on-site fast and measures it for an cumulative hour, maybe they're gonna be able to record it properly. Seven, asking the business owner to self-regulate their amplified sound would be best. But using recording meters should be mandatory for that method of work. City is, should be responsible for the meters, monthly monitoring the data, discussing with the owners the data results. City should charge the applicant for all costs, including providing feedback to the neighbors. And eight, and then I have nine is the end. Eight, an agreed upon, an agreed upon penalty for so many violations should be signed. Example, after three violations, they lose the CUP for six months. And nine, in a new edition, which you talked about.
Thank you, Bill.
Instead, it doesn't apply, but I think it should. I submit the following from the city's ordinance. If we control amplified sound on public property at thirty-five feet, which means you can't hear it at thirty-five feet from the source, we should also apply that to private property. What's good for public property should be good for private property, which affects, if, public property. So I think if we need to, we need to change the ordinance. But if you decide to give us the CUP, it should be very well regulated and monitored on an ongoing basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Sherry, anyone else wish to speak?
No one else.
Okay, we're gonna close the public comment portion of this and come back to deliberations.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Lucas, I think Bill mentioned that, this is what I heard.
Which Bill?
The Bill that was speaking, Bill Miley. Uh, that amplified sound increases the mass, the sound and the frequency. Do you have any understanding of that, what that means?
Does not increase the frequency.
I'm just, that's what he said.
Engineer.
Okay, okay, I was a little.
Jeffrey, cause we're in, we're in, you know.
Deliberation.
We're in deliberations now.
Half that stuff was like, you know, invented.
Oh, okay.
You're not changing the frequency.
Well, I just heard it, I just wanted to make sure when I was listening to it.
A well-recorded mariachi band and a, which is then played back through amplification. If the amplification is adjusted so that it plays back at the same volume at the, at property edge is going to.
As the live performance.
Is going to, there's gonna be no difference. And that's, you know, the whole idea of this amplification, yes, amplification does take the electrical impulse and amplify it or increase it, increase it. But it depends on speaker placement, it depends on a lot of, a lot of, um, not so esoteric things, fairly straightforward things. But I think the, the, where I have a problem is, this, this is far too complicated to have a section here where we're, where we're trying to interpret a word, you know, what's, what is, what is, and that's the measure. You know, somebody doesn't like something, so it's a measure. And then there's another measure of, well, it's cumulative. Well, I don't think that DBs are cumulative.
I, I, my, my feeling is we should use common sense rather than worrying about, uh,
Yeah.
take meters out there and policing them and all that sort of thing. What, what seems like would work in this public space? And, uh, is, is amplified sound really needed in that smaller space or not?
I think the example of, I think the example of a, a woman who says, I, you know, I, I need some amplification so I can hear myself and have confidence to sing and you, who may be reading from a political text.
Don't ever read at all, let me tell you, I don't ever read, don't, don't ever accuse me of that. I never read anything.
If you're reading poetry.
Right, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're bellowing without the benefit of, uh, amplification, but on a political subject, that is something different than someone who's attempting to sing and wants some amplification because they want the feedback that amplification can provide them in their, in their musical process. But as long as it doesn't exceed the DB range that's been set in the ordinance here, you know, I don't know why we, why we drag ourselves into all of this.
Well, my experience in going to places that have acoustic sound and going to places with the same instruments that have amplified is like night and day in terms of the, the feel of it. One feels quiet and intimate and, you know, uh, the other has more of a bouncy, you know, go-to. But you're right, depends on how amplified, but we have no control over that and we're gonna walk around and enforce this all the time. You know, we, unfortunately, we have a situation where the applicant has actually violated their current CUP. So what's to stop them from, in the future, not keeping track of their sound?
I wanna remind all the commissioners that, that while common sense is a laudable goal, there are many phrases in the code that I would call aspirational rather than sensible. Uh, but it is the code that we have and is the code that we should enforce unless there's a very good reason not to. On that point, I would have to agree with Mr. Wirick. Unless there's a good reason to change what we have, we shouldn't change it. Or we should try to change it, but in the meantime abide by it, unless there's a very good reason not to.
So, and I, I agree in principle with, with what Mr. Wirick said.
And then it comes down to an interpretation of what does the code mean?
Yeah, I, I think the, the issue is not whether it, you have a property right, the issue is whether you have, as an expectation when you buy a property. So if you're in a neighborhood that has a certain expectation, it's not a legally enforceable property right. But we sort of wanna have people who have properties and they're expecting that this is what. they're expecting that this is what, and that's normally the complaints you get when some, you change something and all of a sudden the nature of the business is more intrusive or makes more noise. It's, you know, and it's for us, I guess, to decide what's a reasonable expectation for someone to have.
Well, and, and if we're, and if we're talking about, and I, I have, I have trouble with saying it's thirty-five feet from the back of the patio out to the street, it looks to me like it's more than that, but maybe that's consistent with a hundred and five feet to the back fence. Yeah, that's about right. The property's about a hundred and five feet deep east to west. Okay. And then it's, okay, it's a hundred feet to the north, a hundred and five. Well, a hundred and five minus the depth of the patio going to the west, right?
Yeah, I was taking it from the northern edge of the patio and then drawing as, as the crow flies.
Northern edge of the patio to the northern property.
Is a hundred, is a hundred feet.
Hundred feet. Where is that hundred and five feet measured?
From the, from the northwest edge of the patio. Some, from where the, where they kind of, where the building, patio.
Okay, sort of where, sort of the north end of the stage, if you want, if you will, to the back edge of the property?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Can I have another quick question to the staff?
Please, this is, this is a hard one. We have to, we have to...
Okay, cool.
Do our due diligence.
So there is nothing stopping the applicant today from going, filing a temporary use permit and having an event, right, with acoustic sound, or I'm sorry, with amplified sound?
That's correct. They can request a TUP that would be reviewed by staff and the director.
And they can do that reoccurring, they could do it once a month, they could do it once a year, they could do it probably even once a week if they wanted to, right?
The only restriction in the code is not more than several, I think it's three consecutive days, but other than that, there is no limit to how many times a year.
Is there a fee on that?
There is a fee.
Of?
What is it?
The fee is four fifty.
Oh, thank you.
Four fifty.
Four hundred and fifty?
Four hundred and fifty dollars for one event? Yes.
That would kind of take away the profit real quick.
That would, that would kill anything.
Okay, I was just curious.
So a condition theoretically could be, I'm not saying we would do this, but I'm just saying it could be that somebody could do it twice a month or once a month and specify a day, or they could pick a day, I guess.
We could even specify the time.
Yeah, so we could, yeah.
It's, it's the sort of thing that we did with Rancho.
Yeah.
To say, you can have this for monthly and annual events, but not for the weekly events, for example.
One way, since the issue, again, I, I don't really have a strong position as to whether we should make conditions allow it, but one potential would be that if somebody were to get it once a month and we lowered the date, I mean, the, the ending time to nine PM, just like the Rancho was, it would be a way that the business person could test whether or not this works for them.
Yeah, and let me, let me just unpack. There's, there's two different, I know we're, we're using Rancho as, as an example of, of one that's success, I, I would say at this point is to a certain degree successful, but we are getting feedback from the community with each event that comes in and that, if this commissioner is, I remind this commission that this will actually be reviewed before this body in the coming months, so we'll be unpacking that shortly.
Lucas, are you saying complaints when you say feedback?
I don't want to say, I don't want to say either one at this point because I don't want to sup- superspose any sort of determination or direction. We're getting comments that are coming in at this point. The other one that this body reviewed as well is Tipple and Ramble, and that one is als- also a small business in terms of how it operates and relies heavily on the outdoor patio aspect.
Much work confined space, certainly, because there's...
Also surrounded more residential.
Residences within ten feet on one side and...
Well, and five...
Maybe thirty-five or forty on the other.
Yeah, or forty inches on another. It's relatively close in terms of, on the south side is what I'm thinking. So there's a lot of similarities to that one, and at no point in time did they even consider, even discussions offline where are you even considering outdoor entertainment that would be amplified or otherwise, and they said absolutely not, given the parameters of the surrounding residential, sensitive residential uses. So I think there's some similarities that can be drawn from either one, recognizing the distances with residential for Ojai Rancho Inn versus the, the proximity for Tipple and Ramble. Both of those were before this body for review and consideration.
This is sort of measuring that way, this is kind of an intermediate case, right?
Can I ask a question? If I have a business that's in the arcade and it, I'm sorry, I want to have a business that's inside the arcade and there's a property that's available, it was previously a jewelry store, we'll say, but I want to turn it into a music venue with interior amplified sound, although if the door is open, the interior spills out onto the exterior.
The door will be open periodically if people are going in and out.
Right, but, but more importantly, let's say that the jewelry store didn't have an alcohol service permit and the, the use that I want to put it to does, is there a requirement that the, that the new, the new owner of the business, not the real estate, but the business, have a CUP or, or the real estate owner has a CUP allowing for alcohol to be served?
So alcohol and, and this is in the C1 versus VMU?
That's correct.
C1 is a permitted use.
It's a permitted use, so there's no...
For alcohol.
So there's no, there's no, there's no CUP, there's no...
No. Remember the, the example that I was using, and it's critical to the code specifically. Within the C1, within the VMU, if you're doing outdoor, if the, if the use itself is being projected outdoors and not completely within a closed, within a enclosed building, then it's a conditional use permit. If it's within wholly enclosed within that building, then it's not a CUP. Then we're just looking at noise.
Okay, let's, but let's say, let's say that this, this piece of real estate actually does have access to the patio in the back, as Bonnie Lou says. And the person moving into that says, gee, I'd like to have a CUP that can use the back patio. And the person next, the building next to is, using Bill's analogy there, is there, is there any, and, and let's say that it's, it's less attractive to the clientele of this neighboring business to have a alcohol-serving outdoor restaurant next to it. And he essentially says, I, I wouldn't have picked this location for my business if I had known there was going to be a business next to it which was going to have that. I'm just, what I'm doing, I'm trying to test and take the immediate issue of amplification and take other conditions that might, that, that we might look favorably upon or might not look unfavorably upon.
Yeah, I think the difference between the example that you're giving is it's wholly within a commercial center or area which is known to have congregation, I mean, that, that patio area in the back, I mean, we've all been there, it's, it's somewhat tranquil in terms of how it operates and it certainly invites itself.
Also, it's public property.
It, well, that's true. We didn't even think about, we didn't talk about that, but I, I want to take that off the table and just recognize it as private, let's just say, for instance, for the, for the test case that we're talking about. Here, we're talking about sensitive residential uses surrounding it, similar to Tipple and Ramble, which is the reason why, I mean, understand that we've been working with the applicant to, to, to understand what their role and, and what their, kind of their vision is, but then also recognizing that there are these sensitive uses that surround it and being mindful of that. Being mindful of that from the standpoint of recognizing that they can continue to do these events as long as those events are non-amplified. I know you're, I, Commissioner, I can tell you're, you're struggling with the noise or the sound component of it and wanting to take that off the table, but it, it really is something that if we receive or when or if, because we have in the past, receive complaints on something of this nature, whether it's, let's say, for instance, Tipple and Ramble did end up doing some sort of event, right? Outdoors, they're not, they're not approved for it.
Amplified or otherwise.
Yeah, amplified or otherwise, they're not approved for it. We'd be going out immediately and saying, is this an event? Recognizing it as an event, we'd be shutting it down immediately. That's no different than co-compliance going on in any other weekend, recognizing the event that has not been approved and then identifying to them, look, you do not have an approved event at this specified location, you have such and such time to either shut it down or wind it down. We're not looking for hard shutdowns, we're looking for compliance through, through the regulations that we have currently in place. So I think it's, it's important to note that there are some, some, kind of some sticky situations that come up with this, but recognizing that the, the sensitive uses, which is residential, which I remind you this commission and even the, the audience, that VMU, mixed use typically does not allow for just outright single-family residential. It typically doesn't. It's looking for a transitional period, something that I think Commissioner Trent has certainly done, I can tell he's done his homework on some of this. In other communities that I've worked in, you typically see single-family residential as a non-permitted use within a village, within a mixed-use scenario, because it truly is a transitional period and it has a bunch of different other types of uses, not typically residential as a permitted use moving forward. And why is that? Because they're looking for those specific properties to transition to something else. Here, it's a permitted use and remains that way.
And here, the VMU extends two blocks north of Matilahaw.
Yeah.
Actually, two blocks north of Aliso.
Right.
To where it's almost a hundred percent residential.
It does, it does get to my concern, it's going to sound like a, you know, off the point, but it does get to my concern about Bryant Circle and allowing residential in Bryant Circle. Once you have people there, they're going to be in this room and we're never going to be able to have the kind of uses that smell and make sounds and, and, you know, because they are voters and they have, and they live there and their, and their life, their life is tied up in this and so on and so forth. So I, I just, I, I don't, I understand and I appreciate it and I appreciate your clarifications here that, that this is about the fact that this is VMU and that residential is part of what we're looking at here. And so I just, I just hope that we remember that point when we get to the, are we going to allow residential into, into the industrial and the implications of that in terms of, we think we're doing something good by allowing that. On the other hand, you know, that area is there for the benefit of commerce in the town, and if, if we let people move in, it's going to threaten the commerce of the, of the town, so.
Mr. Bennett and I would disagree on that.
Oh, I know we do. I was so pleased to see you sit all the way over there.
Yeah, because we have an unusual circumstance where we have essentially residential areas which we decided to overlay to make them VMU. Single-family residents, mostly they tend to be like, like apartments, you know, townhouses, that sort of thing, it's not quite...
And single-family residents.
I'm just saying that traditional VMUs, when, when they've developed these, what they call new urbanism, the, 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 commercial center is a perfect place for new urbanism because the, when you build like condos or apartments and those kind of places, the people that move there want to be in that sort of thing, or they wouldn't move there in the first place. So they want to be in an activity that's mixed, they want to be work-live. So when you design those, it's designed, it's designed to attract a certain type of younger person that wants to live in those communities. That's why in urban areas, when areas like the Village, other places, transition, you end up getting a lot more younger people buying the townhouses and you get more bars and stuff in the community, as, so it, it changes what you're trying to do. So it really depends on, you know, putting, putting residentials in there would be only if that would attract a certain group of people that would like to be in that area. You're not going to buy a house to live in Bryant Circle and expect quiet. But anyway, we're off the topic.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I think though, you bring up a good point, because I think the nature of what we're talking about is how far do we expand VMU into the commercial space? Because it seems like we're in this middle, obviously it's a transition, so it's, we've got resident, we got commercial, we got residential, and the VMU is kind of right in that middle, right? Where, where does it flow, where does it stop? We've got a lot of residents that live in the VMU that might not want the encroachment of commercial, and then we have businesses that would like to have a little bit more commercial in that space. So we have to find what that balance might be. It's a tough decision, I mean, that's kind of where we're debating all of this stuff, but I think what we need to be afraid of or we need to be careful of is, is setting a precedence and doing stuff that is going above and beyond that other folks can look at and interpret and come up with new business solutions for their stuff that they want to do. So, yeah, it's, it's something that could be looked at as setting a precedence for other businesses to do the same sort of thing.
It's funny, because I was thinking that, as, we hadn't talked about it, what does it mean to do this as a precedent? Because right now, we have none. Except for the motel, which is not really in that kind of area.
Yeah. And it's, oh, Sunita is in VMU, I think.
Is that in a VMU all the way down there?
Or is that C1?
No, I think that's C1. It's right at the...
No, 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 I'm talking about the...
Sunita.
Oh, Sunita, sorry.
At Aliso in Montgomery.
It's right on the edge.
The motel we're talking about, that, that's not in a VMU, is it?
I think that strip up Montgomery is all C1 right now.
Yeah, okay, so we're talking about VMU here.
In spite of the fact there being single-family residences there, it's C1.
Yeah. I, I do think precedent is an important thing to think about.
Yeah.
If we allow this, wouldn't Tipple Ramble come back and say, well, can't we do it too?
Well, you also look at too, like the location of Tipple and Ramble, surrounded by residential, and then you look at this location, it's mostly commercial. I mean, Rancho Inn is right, I mean, not the Rancho Inn, the new hotel, Arobar is going to be right down the street. I mean, it's, there's all commercial in that space. So I don't know, it's a, it's a tough one. Now, I wanted to ask you, in the past, I think we've looked at conditional use permits and we created a, basically an annual review almost, where we look at the conditional use permit to see how things are going and yada, yada, yada. Yeah, to check in, yeah.
There are conditional use permits that are approved for a period of time and then come back to the planning commission for a review.
Correct.
I caution this commission on, on using that as a stepping stool for future conditional use permits, for the simple fact that if we continue to that trend, we're going to be doing more reviews than we are of the, the current projects that we're working on. But I also, we've had that discussion before, I recognize that, I know you brought that up because you want...
In a couple of places, we have done that.
Yes.
Yes.
We've lost that one.
Look, because there's, here's, here's the situation, there are, with, with the conditional use permits of old versus the conditional use permits that I would say this commission and even members that were on this commission previous, within the last two years, probably three, since I've been here, the CUPs have had some pretty heavy and, some heavy conditions to ensure that whatever use or sensitive areas that are being potentially impacted are, are being addressed and monitored, and then course correction, and that's through the annual review on some of these. Hotel Arobar, once that gets up and running, we have an annual review, potentially more than just annual reviews, and there's monitoring that both the applicant and staff are doing than just annual reviews, and there's monitoring that both the applicant and staff are doing independent. Now, that eats up time that that staff is is reviewing, analyzing, creating data, and then translating that data and bringing that back to this to this body. That's applications that are far beyond current applications that we're working on on a daily basis. So both of those are independent. We recognize that if that's something this body is adamant about, in terms of getting to a comfort level, we can certainly look at that. But I caution this body, when we're doing these.
Don't do it all the time.
To recognize that it really should be done in certain circumstances, not a, not a natural practice moving forward.
As I listen to the discussion here, it is not yet clear to me whether the commission as a whole is inclined to approve or deny this request. I do note that on page five of six of the administrative report, it says there are two resolutions, one for approval, one for denial. What happened? Did you decide that approval was not appropriate?
You you asked me this question prior to the meeting and and I, when I responded to it, the response was that there was a time that we were providing, we were going to provide the commission with an option, or if or or if you wanted to approve it, we had a resolution ready with with some conditions. But then we decided we wanted to stand by what it was that we were recommending, which was, we're recommending denial of of this, because we don't think it's appropriate for the for the surrounding, for the neighborhood. And and so if the commission decides.
So there's nothing in writing right now that would allow the commission to approve this?
Right, but if the commission chooses to approve it, then we would return to you with a resolution with the conditions placed in it that you that you wish to put in it this evening.
So we're talking, we're talking about delay, but not necessarily anything else?
Correct.
And this is your standard practice, because I remember raising this once myself to you, why there was only a denial, and you told me that was the standard practice, and if we wanted to approve it.
I will admit, when we were looking at this, we were looking at both an approval and a denial. We leaned more heavily towards the denial, given the parameters of the of the uses. In addition to that, when we started looking at an approval, it was a blank canvas and I became flabbergasted of what conditions would even make sense, given the parameters of what we're looking at. So um, falling into the to the denial recommendation that 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 staff is bringing forward to this body was the ultimate decision that we felt most comfortable with. Getting to an approval with with a with conditions, I think we started looking at at the potential monitoring, like we were talking about earlier, the annual review, that could potentially be something that would be on the table. It's, it seemed to a certain degree to be daunting from that standpoint. If this body is leaning towards approval, then I think it's important that that this body identify what conditions we should start looking at. If this body is leaning towards denial, certainly that could be something that any one of these, any one of you commissioners could make as a recommendation or even.
Motion.
Motion, sorry. I draw a blank there.
I have a question about a condition.
There's no, there's no motion for approval that's appropriate at the moment. We could have a motion for denial. We could have a motion to send staff back to draft a different resolution with a different outcome, if that's what the commission wants. But I think those are the alternatives.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, the obvious ones are hours of operation, and we've, we've discussed here that while ten o'clock may be in in the context of other things, that nine o'clock may be an appropriate one, the frequency of the of the events. There actually, there are a whole lot of things that you can pull from what's been done at Rancho, which is why we spent so much time on Rancho, is because we were trying, we were engaged, as were you yourselves, with trying to figure out, how can we, how can we mitigate whatever, whatever happens there?
How can we pacify the neighborhood without killing the business?
Yeah.
Right now, they can do, um, condit, what do you call it? Temporary use permit.
Yes.
But you charge them four fifty. Could a condition be that you're allowed to do temporary use permits, request them, and not be charged?
I don't think it's in the power of the planning commission. We'll have to ask Epi. We can't change the fee schedule.
Correct. The the fee schedule is up to.
We use a different word than temporary use permit. We call it a a director's discretion of up to one, one a month or something like that.
Yeah, I think, I think we got what we got.
That's also something that could be approved through through a conditional use permit is the is the frequency of events.
In other words, they they would not be charged the four fifty if we, if we, for example, approved that they could have one event a month.
Correct. They could have, then you would have a CUP and one and conditioned to have one a month, one amplified event a month, and then that would run with the land.
And they'd have to.
They would, they would never pay, they would never pay again until they wanted, until or unless they wanted to modify.
Change that one.
Conditional use permit.
And the one a month would have to, they could just pick the date, or would they, could a condition be they have to go through the director to get approval of?
That's up to the planning commission as to.
We could do, we could make that a condition that it get approved by the the community development director.
If we say once a month, if approved by the CDD.
No, no, just when they would do it.
CDD could always say no.
No, I I think it would be that it would be.
I don't think that's something that we want to do in those words.
The planning commission would would put a condition on that they desired, but it might be, you know, the third Friday or.
I guess we'd have to say the the date.
Or once, well, it could be, I I would think once a month is is equally plausible and legal. Legal Epi is once a month, because the other case that we dealt with, they had weekly, monthly, and annual events, and then they had special events on top of that. But it seems to me that we made, that we made a condition of approval having to do with monthly events. And I don't wanna go back and reread everything right now, but it seems to me there was something there that specified what could or could not be done in monthly events.
Yeah, there was, yeah. And we also talked about.
Nobody questioned the word monthly.
No.
At that point.
And we also talked about uh, non-school hours, you know, couldn't be during school hours and events. Yeah, that's something we could look at, too.
So, I think, I think we've all kind of run down here.
Yeah.
Giving, giving our deliberative comments, I think we have two choices. We can have a motion to deny the request and vote on that. We can have a motion to send staff back to come to us with a different resolution and specify what those conditions would be if there's a different resolution that is not a denial. And so, what's the sense of the commission? What do we wanna do? Which of those do?
I personally am against amplification in a neighborhood. I sure wouldn't want it in my backyard. The, I was willing to go with a temporary CUP, but with a four fifty fee, that's ridiculous. If this commission decides to approve, I think that we do have to limit the number of events, the time it ends, and I would like to explore having the applicant record or a monitor that does a recording so that we are not relying on sending out the, the, thank you, that guy, every, every week or every month or whatever. So I will, I would support a motion to deny, and if we decide to go ahead with it, I want a lot of conditions.
I will make a motion to continue the matter, direct staff to provide additional information with conditions. I think the conditions we talked about here, I do like the the check-in, unfortunately. I think that would make be appropriate in this particular situation, considering it is mostly residential that.
The most, the number of check-ins could also be one of the conditions.
For sure. We could also look at.
You wanna do that.
And we could also look at a condition of the number of violations. If they hit a certain number of violations, we can pull the CUP. So I think there's a lot of different things we can do. I wanna, I wanna be consistent in supporting our small businesses, which I think we've been consistent at, and I like the idea of supporting them. I don't wanna see our businesses suffer. If there's stuff that we can do to help them, then I'd like to look at doing that. So that's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm leaning.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett?
I guess I agree with Commissioner Trent, and that is that I think we should ask our staff to meet with and come with the applicant and come back with what what might be done that would be acceptable to the applicant and mitigate the issues that are concerning us. I would hope that we would, as part of this process, clean up the language and drop these things that are too broad. But, yeah, I.
It's funny, this is not in Title X, this is in Title V.
No, it doesn't.
So.
Doesn't matter what title it's in.
We kinda mess anywhere we wanna mess in the Ojai code, it sounds like.
Yep. I think that's, I think that's it. So I I would love to see the I'd love to see us being able to find a solution to the problem, which allows the the business to operate and have these events that they currently have. And, you know, I, visiting it back again in a couple of years probably makes some sense. And at that point, if it's been innocuous, we could maybe expand it to twice a month rather than once a month. So there could be a trivia night and a open mic night or whatever. So, and there's some opportunity to play with them, with the microphones and the speakers and the, you know, what what can be done to, again, mitigate what amplification actually means.
If if we're going to ask staff to come back with a different set of writing for us to vote on, I think we need to be as specific as we can. Giving them that guidance.
All right.
That said, Mr. Starkweather, your feelings?
Well, as general, I I agree with Judy. I'm not really big on having amplified music outdoors in in the commercial area. I just think, when I wanna walk down the street, I don't wanna have to hear ten different sounds of different kinds of music that I may or may not appreciate. And I think acoustic in a small space like that is probably reasonable, but I wanna also accommodate as much as we can out of these circumstances. So I think once a month and monitoring the actual sound would be a compromise that I could go along with. And I think that's something that it ought to be also, I think, a regular time so that the neighbors know when that. Well, end time, yes, I agree. End time should be nine o'clock, not not ten o'clock. But I think there ought to be a regular time of the month, so that everybody knows when it is.
Can find it to the third Saturday or.
Yeah, so that everyone knows and, you know, they can go on their vacation that day or whatever. They'll know. But I don't think that would be as intrusive, that you knew once a month there was gonna be sound and we monitored it. And I do think there's a difference between a a voice reading a poetry than someone singing. I I'm not as in favor of someone singing through a mic, to be honest with you. But just listening to a voice, my son is a poet, so I go to a lot of his poetry readings. Half of them don't have any amplification at all. But you don't tend to shout when you're reading a poem, you know? And if you're making a speech, you go up and down, I agree, but the the advantage of a mic, which I use at times, is that you can modify your voice, modify your voice. You can go down and go up and that sort of thing. But when you're singing, it's always pretty much out there. So I I really, don't really like the idea of singing in neighborhoods, to be honest with you. But I could, I could go along with once a month.
Okay. Are we gonna have a motion here?
I'll make that a motion, which I just said.
No, you gotta, you gotta spell it out.
You wanna spell it out?
No, well, I.
Okay, we'll do, I would like you to come back with conditions of once a month, end time at nine PM, and a monitoring recording where you check in to see what the sound is, and a specified date of each month. I don't mean the date, but, you know, every third Thursday, I mean, every third Saturday or something like that. Is that clear?
I think that is. Could I also add that staff reviews the conditions that were applied to Ojai Rancho Inn?
Oh, sure.
And kind of.
That would be good.
To a certain degree, cherry pick some of those and modify those and bring those back as a part of that.
What was the check-in date on the Rancho?
It was one year from the date of approval.
One year?
And I think the date of approval was in December. So you're gonna be seeing that.
That's reasonable.
Shortly.
And is that a recurring annual thing? I don't recall it being that. I thought it was a one-off.
I'm sorry, they're all blending together, because I know we had. I wanna say that one was just a one, one-off scenario.
But with, but with the threat that if there was too much trouble, that aspect of the CUP would be withdrawn.
Correct. Withdrawn or.
Or modified.
Modified.
Or complaints.
Com- comments received at this point. I don't wanna say either way.
Well, and that's the case with any conditional use permit. It is conditional, so if the conditions aren't, aren't met, then the commission can revoke the conditional use permit.
Right.
In whole or in part?
Whole, well, in whole, so you're saying in whole or in part, part being revert back to the non-amplified?
The amplified, that's the only part we're adding.
I don't know. If if you say withdraw.
As an example.
Or void the CUP, there's, that 2014 CUP has a lot of stuff in it.
It is, it's.
Voided it.
It's more than just the entertainment that we're talking about. It's the alcohol as well.
Yeah, and if you voided that CUP, then it would drastically change that business. I don't know what they'd be allowed to do.
Right.
I'm a little concerned about the phrase, void the CUP or or revoke it or.
I would want it only to be related to the amplified music and not anything else.
Amplified entertainment.
Can't we just keep the same cup and add amplified music with these conditions?
Yes.
That, I would wanna limit it to just the amplified music aspect that we're adding for review. Amplification.
Amplification, speech, I mean.
It would be both, speak. I'm not telling they can't, I don't like, you know, singing, but that's loud, I think, out of this.
Sort of heathen.
Heathen? No, I mean, I love singing, but just know that it's a much.
So I I think I heard a motion.
I need a second.
I did, yes. I heard a motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Discussion? Discussion?
You can remember what it is.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember exactly what we.
There were just, there were just two or three conditions at that time. One was frequency of events was once a month.
End time.
On a specific date of the month.
Yeah.
Day or date of the month.
What, what day are we talking about?
We're not a day, it's like.
Just once a month.
They could pick the third Sunday, I mean, whatever. They can pick one, but it's gotta be the same. How you want to describe that?
And, and the end time and.
Oh, yeah.
Recording, a monitor, recording.
Whereas the noise, noise.
Device.
What was the third part?
And check in once in, in a year. There are four things.
Check in a year.
That's three. Did you say there were four?
Check in was the fourth.
Event, number of events, end time.
Review.
Monitor, record.
Oh, monitoring and recording.
And check in in a year.
And then the director included that staff would look at Rancho Inn conditions of approval and had picked ones that were appropriate.
What was done with Rancho? Yeah, given the conversation that's happened tonight.
And you're free to make any recommendations on our, our motion if you want.
Well, and then you'll be reviewing it, you'll be reviewing it and.
Then we would review a different resolution piecewise and decide if all those.
Oh, we're going to get a lesson on decibels.
That's Bailey's test of us.
I would love to know what fifty-five decibels sound like personally.
I don't think you want to hear fifty-five decibels.
Well, that's what we're allowing here, so we should know what we're allowing.
It also relates to how far away you are. Some people say speech can be fifty-five if it's like right next to somebody, but I don't know.
Alright, any, any discussion of the motion to have staff come back? Oh, included in that is then that we continue the case, I think we should continue the case under this motion to a date certain. And I would ask staff, what is a reasonable date certain?
I would caution against doing date certain. I think staff needs to meet with the applicant, work through some of these conditions that are going to be crafted. And then, depending on schedules, take it off calendar and then we'll bring it back and re-notice at that time.
And a new fee is due at that time?
No, there wouldn't be a new fee.
Because it's still a, it's continued, continued off calendar, continued on calendar.
Yeah, the only, the only difference.
It's still continued.
Correct, it's still continued. Right. It, it doesn't take the application and throw it in the trash. It's, it, the application is still.
Start.
Correct, it's not a new start.
Modification.
Correct.
Okay.
I appreciate that clarification. Anyone else with thoughts in the manner of discussion of the motion? Alright, Sherry, let's have a roll call on Item Three's motion to continue with conditions.
Chair Coley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Starkweather?
Yes.
Okay. So we will have another occasion to consider what the conditions on this operation are. And we'll give the public another opportunity to comment on those conditions. Okay? We move on to Item Four then, priorities of planning commission and the CDD. I see you still have formula business ordinance in bold.
I rebolded that one. I, as this, as this body, I remind this body, this is a standing item that we have on our agendas for every agenda every two weeks. Now that I have, and now that we have under our wing a advanced planner who is working diligently, you met Alex a few weeks ago. He is focused on. He is, he is squarely focused in on several of these items, but I wanted to highlight formula business because that is an item that will be coming up for community input. We're working on a couple of different pieces to that puzzle. And once I have some, some dates confirmed, I'll be coming back to this body, you'll see as an update, and inviting this body to come forward, at least do a listening and from a community standpoint, because that will be coming up very, very quickly. And I, right now, we're looking at potentially two different opportunities. I don't have dates right now because we're still massaging how that's, how that's going to be worked out, but just know that in the near term.
Two opportunities off of this list?
Two opportunities for the formula business ordinance.
Oh, for the formula business ordinance.
Yeah, that's why it's highlighted. So just know, that's the update that I wanted to give this body, that we're pushing and a community input opportunity. I don't want to call it a workshop, but maybe like a focus group.
This should be a public community workshop.
Yeah, but it's not noticed publicly. It would be something that we would do similar to the, to the, what the general plan of workshop was. Doing blasts, getting, getting input from the community, inviting them to come to, to this event. So.
Yeah, I don't think we're at the point of even having a term sheet on formula business yet.
Thus is the reason why we're reaching out to the community. Business community, obviously, because it's the most impactful. But opening it up to the general community as well, recognizing that it's beyond just the businesses. Also, I, I do want to note that we are working on Title X. There's two prongs to that. The one is the prong where this body took forward recommendations through ordinances to city council. We're finalizing those.
A giant text amendment.
Yeah, those errata pieces to go to city council, and that'll be in the near term, I want to say, probably in the next thirty to forty-five days. I just started reviewing some of that, and I know Epi will be seeing that shortly as well.
Well, I have a question on that, because you mentioned Alex Smith. He's a fine gentleman, by the way.
Yeah, Alex De Silva, not Alex Smith.
I wish, I wish.
Alex Smith is the quarterback for, for football.
Alex.
He still is?
Alex De Silva.
I thought he retired.
Excuse me, Alex De Silva.
He was with the Chiefs. Or no, he was with.
San Francisco.
San Francisco.
I wish I could bottle his enthusiasm.
Yeah.
Because he and I have been meeting a couple of times a week and just talking through more errata and low-hanging fruit that we hadn't, that we as a commission hadn't gotten to.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Awesome.
But there are, as I think that Lucas was, was referring to, there are two batches of text amendment, section by section, that the plan, that a prior planning commission approved for recommendation to the city council. And we've consolidated that into a single document, which is but somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred pages, I think.
Yeah.
But it, it's lengthy because each section, it says, here's the section, and here's the additions, and here's the strikeouts. So there's a lot more ink on the page than, than just the changes. But it's a large document, and, and Alex and I are working on its successor. And that will come back to the planning commission, because that is material the planning commission has not approved for recommendation to the city council.
Yep.
So that's the.
Those are the two.
And, and beyond that, there are policy questions that I think we may have to take up one at a time. I don't know yet.
Yeah, it depends on.
That are more serious.
It really depends on the policy questions. Some of those we may be able to group together. Some of those may need to stand alone. This, this body has, has certainly grappled with a couple of them regarding current projects that have come before this body. And we'll have an opportunity to do a deeper dive to kind of unpack some of that and look at some revisions that would span across a couple of different articles likely. So several articles, actually, because there's been times where this body has wanted to get in a deeper dive on certain items, and it's like, whoa, 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 let's set the, let's set the table. We're through the errata, and once we've got that done, now let's look at those.
Right.
It's more than a dozen, it's several dozen that we'd be looking at.
In the errata, there's a lot of global changes that, that the commission approved way back. I'm talking three or four years ago now.
Yeah.
Like, like when it said in this article. Spell it out, which article is it? Or if you have a reference to a section of code, you put the title of the section of code in there rather, so that somebody at least has an idea of what you're talking about. So they can choose whether to go flip through the code and read the whole thing, those kinds of things.
Incorrect references is another.
Incorrect references.
That was happening quite a lot.
References to state law sections that have been repealed.
Yeah.
Or even code sections that have been repealed.
Yeah.
So it's just, it, there's, there's a lot of house cleaning there that hadn't been done since two thousand and four.
Yep.
Was the last major time that there was a change to Title X. But I can see there are other titles where we may find ourselves needing clarification.
I caution that. I think that's definitely a joint meeting discussion with council in the future.
Yeah.
Right now, let's focus on narrowing and checking some of these out.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cannabis is obviously one that we checked off. I've taken it off completely until council says otherwise.
What did council decide to do? We had three questions?
Yes.
Do we have lounges in Bryant Circle? Do we have stores or dispensaries on Ojai Avenue? Do we have lounges on Ojai Avenue? I think those were the three questions.
Those were the.
The, the prohibited question, which is.
Smoking versus non-smoking.
Smoking versus.
Oh, and smoking versus non-smoking in the lounges.
Yeah, because that's just an outright prohibition.
But I, I never got the impression that city council had made a definitive decision on any one of those four questions.
But they've, they've had a discussion about.
Didn't they allow them to have
No, that's what they want.
Use at the existing places? Wasn't that what, what they agreed that they could, they could?
I don't know why I brought that up.
I was there at the meeting, so.
Let me go back and, and look at the, at the minutes and see what their action was officially, because I don't, I don't want to speculate at this point. It was a while ago, it was several months. I want to say it was back in.
They said they could.
I think it became before this body in either April or early May, and then they took it forward.
At first, they said that we couldn't even do it there because there wasn't enough room. But then, when the council said, well, could you do it? And they said, yeah, why don't you let us do it? So I think that's what they approved.
Yeah, there was some compromise there. I just don't remember the exact language.
Yeah.
But it's been taken off of, just that, I was, what I was getting at, I don't want to get in the weeds on this, is that's been taken off for now. It's not something that this body needs to focus on. That's why we're focusing on other aspects, so.
We made our recommendations and the city council will make a decision at some point.
Yep, and it may get kicked back to this commission. And if it is, it's going to land back on here.
That could be, that could be their decision to send it back to us. Who knows? Okay. But we should expect to see something on one or another of these items in the next two or three months?
Yes. I think the VMU component is one that you could probably see first. I think that is actually something is. But I will say, that one, unpacking it, and we started talking a little bit about it tonight, there is one section that I'm a little bit concerned about, so. We just got to figure out how to navigate that and give a recommendation.
Oh, what, this VMU zoning from commercial manufacturing to special purpose.
This body's seen it twice.
We dispensed of that, didn't we?
No, 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 no. We brought forward two kind of red lines, but there's been no draft ordinance or resolution for this body to consider.
Okay, alright.
That'll be coming, that, that'll be the next step for this, for that item, coming forward.
Yeah, and that kind of intersected with what happened tonight, which is the noise ordinance, you know, how is, how it relate to.
We gotta see the true impact, for sure.
Residential rather than commercial anymore.
Yeah, and if this body remembers, I highlighted like eight or nine areas that I was slightly concerned with, moderately concerned with, and yeah, those were all noise.
But since it's a special use permit, it's kind of like original thing. We can decide what we want.
Wait, the what permit?
It, it, if, when it becomes a special purpose district, excuse me, I read it, said it wrong, then we have much more discretion to figure out what would work in a VMU for noise in a special use, because it's not, no longer contained within the commercial section.
Right, but keep in mind that anything that we do with land use in VMU, no matter which part of the code it's in, we make a recommendation to city council.
Of course.
We don't make a decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, yeah.
Everything's.
You're making a decision on a resolution that'll then have a draft ordinance that'll be forwarded as a recommendation, yes. So it's a decision as a recommendation. So it's kind of both. You're, you're still voting on something.
We're deciding, but we can't.
It's a decision, but it's not a final decision, because the final decision is the property of the city council.
Yeah, and in a legislative action, when you're looking at zoning, this, it's a two-step process.
Other, other decisions that we make are final unless appealed.
Correct.
But that one, there's no appeal there. The final, our final decision is a recommendation.
Correct.
Okay, anything else we need to?
Well, the, the next item is plant, up.
Yeah, the next one is, Item Five is future agenda items.
Yep, so we've got on the September twenty-first agenda, Humane Society, and then Gables. And then work plan, obviously, and general plan update. I'll probably actually have a little bit of an update for this body for the general plan. And that's from when we had the workshop shoot a month ago now. We've actually just, just.
Well, that was land use and transportation or circulation.
So I can talk about it.
We didn't, we didn't close it out yet, have we?
The, the date to comment was on Friday, so if.
This Friday?
Last Friday.
Shoot.
We kept extending.
If you went to the meeting, you had your chance.
I know, I know. I had plenty of time. Plenty of time. I did do the survey.
Is the Gables thing definite, or is that just continuing to, to wait for them?
I've received updated information, and I'm reviewing that currently. There is a good chance that it'll be on the twenty-first. Definitely, the Humane Society is going to be on.
Are we expecting anything more from El Roblar? Were they doing anything for us? Did we need to see anything?
The only thing that we've got going on for Hotel El Roblar is the monitoring of their conditions. And that doesn't actually start until the hotel.
Till they get their.
So right now, they're in, they're in the construction phase.
occupancy or whatever, yeah.
There is no lighting fixtures or anything.
No, no, the, all the details have been buttoned up and have gone through, through building. So we poured through those details. It reminded me of my days in Claremont when I was reviewing college projects that were, it was like, oh, it was a small tree that was just destroyed to ensure that this plan was submitted. So it's just like, similar to what we're seeing with, there's just a lot to unpack with these. A lot of detail with construction drawings. I want to make sure that I can talk about, I'm just looking here to see that I have general plan on here. I don't see it on here. I can't talk about general plan.
General plan update, it's on every meeting.
On every meeting.
Mission.
It doesn't say what part of the general plan.
Yeah, but I don't see it on here as a.
amend the agenda.
No, it.
On the agenda, oh.
Alright, well, just know that I'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, the agenda, in addition to commission member report and city council liaison should have directors report.
I know, it usually does. I don't see it here. It's fine.
Just squeeze the lines up some on the page.
Just know that I'll, I'll be talking about general plan update at the next meeting. I can't talk about it tonight, but that's okay. Not, not a lot to update, but there'll be more in two weeks.
But that's land use and circulation?
Land use, circulation, safety.
Oh, and safety.
Those three things were discussed at the workshop, and we were looking for input.
I was there, and I didn't, I didn't see that much on safety. That gets us back into fire and water.
Yeah, it was interwo, well, both of those are interwoven within the safety, right? It's, it's kind of an interest, I can't talk about it. It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
But just know that I'll be talking about it. Yeah, we'll talk about it more at the next meeting. Lots of, lots of pending items. Just know that some of those are going to be being, are going to be pushed up as they near completion and ready for review.
Oh, okay.
I was just meeting with staff yesterday morning, and we were going through these as well as others, and I think these are probably the ones that are the closest to, to being before hearing. So we don't have anything for October fifth, but yeah, at least two of those are probably going to be ready, so we'll, we'll figure that out. So we'll, we'll figure that out.
Good.
What's nice is that we've gotten out of the logjam that we were having before, and it's projects as we're getting them ready, we're either getting one or two on each agenda. So it's, it's becoming a little bit less of a logjam. I would say the logjam's almost, we were in a logjam back in December, January of last, of last year, leaning into early this year.
We're busy with lots of agenda items, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, they picked this on purpose. They wanted to get through the really bad stuff and then they put it on.
I think, I think we would all agree.
Eased into this thing.
Delay-
Shorter meetings are better.
Yeah, yeah, short meetings are better, but delay in processing an application is, is a disservice to the government if it's unreasonable delay.
I agree. Well, and plus, there are-
I know you do.
Yeah, there's certain state requirements that we've got to follow as well. So regardless of, of delaying, we're held to a certain standard with current projects, so. Once they're complete, they're ready to move forward. And why, we had a logjam simply because we had so many that were coming complete at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's two stories.
Okay. Uh, any commissioners wish to report anything of great interest? You said that candidate's forum was postponed.
It was postponed because a number of candidates and their families had COVID.
Okay.
So they wanted to be safe.
So it's three weeks from tonight instead?
It's, uh, Wednesday night to 28th.
Yeah. Okay.
That's probably better because it's closer to when people vote.
Yeah.
If you had one this week, who would it even remember when anybody said?
When are the mail-in ballots going out? That's probably-
The 10th of, uh, of October.
10th of October, yeah, okay.
People don't usually-
It's still-
They don't usually focus till they see their ballot, to be honest with you.
Right. That gives people almost two weeks to think about it before they-
That's plenty of time.
Even have a chance to vote, yeah. Okay?
It's going to be interesting.
Anything else? Nothing else? Then at 8:33, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
8:33. Is that a record?